Let me know.
The broadcast has been set.
The time is now five oh one. I call to order the July twenty six, twenty twenty two Policy and Governance Committee Special Meeting. One point two, welcome and opening remarks from the Chair. Good evening. Thank you guys for being here. I am Judy McInnes Murray, Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee and an at-large member. We will now have introductions of committee members, starting with board members, administration staff and guests, and policy office staff.
Right. Hello, everyone, and good evening. My name is Albert Saron Ruiz. I'm the Vice Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee and the Student Board Member for the Board of Education. I am truly excited for tonight's meeting and thank anyone who is watching tonight and for all of those people and the beautiful faces I see as part of the meeting tonight.
Hi, I'm Pamela Boozer Struthers, member of the Committee and the District Three Board of Education Member, and I would like to congratulate Mr. Sarum Ruiz on his Vice Chair position on the Committee for this year. Look forward to working together this year. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Sonya Williams, the Board of, I represent District Nine, the Southern Part of the County, and I am the Vice Chair of the Board of Education.
Administrative staff, please.
Good, good evening. My name is Joe Day Newsome. I'm the Director of the Board Staff. I'd like to introduce the staff members who are joining us today in that meeting. First is Mia Barton. Mia, can you say hello?
Hi, my name is Muriel Barton, Administrative Secretary of the Board Office.
Thank you. Next is Cindy Adeline. Cindy, can you say hello to everyone?
Hi, everyone. My name is Cindy, Administrative Secretary in the Board Office.
Thank you, Cindy. Next is Jessica Guerrero. Ms. Guerrero, can you say hello to everybody?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica Guerrero. I'm one of the Administrative Assistants for the Board Office.
Thank you very much, Ms. Guerrero. And Ms. Lopez, can you say hello?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rosa Lopez, and I am one of the Administrative Secretaries here for the Board Office.
Few valuable members of our staff who are not joining us but are working every day, Shaquell Coleman and Anise Ellis, and we thank everybody for their hard work.
Thank you. Administration staff, please. Introduce yourselves.
Good evening. I'm Robin Welch, and I'm the Director of Government Affairs, Compliance and Procedures.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jamie Austin. I serve with the Division of Supporting Services, Department of Building Services, as a Management Analyst.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jason Walker. I serve with the Department of Building Services. I'm a Building Automation Energy Management Technician.
Thank you. And now, last but not least, Mr. Whitley III is a member of the Law Office of Shipley and Horn, who is the Board of Education's Council as of July first, twenty twenty three, I mean, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Whitley, please introduce yourself and your assistant, please.
Hello, everyone. As the Chair said, my name is Dennis Whitley III. I'm with the Law Office of Shipley and Horn, and I have here with me this evening Paralegal Gabrielle Gray.
Thank you so much. For the community, you can see that the Board of Education has many new members and staff members to assist us, which I'm very grateful and appreciative of. And we have a brand-new law firm who is going to assist us with the work of the Board during this fiscal year and beyond. This special meeting of the Policy and Governance Committee is being held for the purpose of adhering to the schedule set forth by this policy to complete consideration and revision of policies started in school year twenty-one and school year twenty-two. We have three policies for review and vote. The policies are: A new policy entitled Sustainability; a revision to Policy fifteen hundred entitled Parent and Community Advisory Council; and a revision to Policy thirty-three twenty-three entitled Purchasing. In addition to the listed three policies, we are also voting on whether or not to send to the full Board as a discussion item the Policy and Governance Committee's School Year twenty-two, twenty-three list of policies for review and schedule of review work plan. Item one point three, Adoption of the Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the July twenty-six, twenty twenty-two Special Meeting Agenda?
It's been moved.
Okay.
It has been moved and properly seconded. All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any extensions, any needs? The agenda is approved. Item two point oh, Items to Review for Action. Two point one, New Policy Sustainability. We have here with us today Ms. Robin Welch, who you know as the Director of Government Relations and Compliance and Procedures. Ms. Welch, would you give us an overview of the sustainability policy and introduce administrative staff here to provide a summary of the policy?
Yes. So the sustainability policy is, was created, first of all, in compliance with Section five dash three, one, two, point one of the Education Article, which requires that each school system have a sustainability or energy use policy. In addition to that, so this policy reflects those requirements, but in addition to that, this policy also aligns with the Prince George's County Public Schools Climate Change Action Plan. In creating this policy and working on it, I spent a lot of time looking at the Climate Act, Climate Change Action Plan, and the plan, the creators of that plan were for two of us in terms of the fact that they really met many of the requirements that were already laid out in the law. And so I took, if you go through the action plan, they identified eight priority recommendations. And under each eight, each recommendation are actions. They have operational actions, mitigation actions, and adaptation actions. So what I did was look at their plan on each of the actions for each priority and identify which of those, which of those actions could be completed within a one-to-three time period, because, again, the plan is wonderful because it has this timeline and it shows you exactly what the predicted times are for completing the different actions that exist under each priority. So, and you go through the policy, what you will see is just reflects each of the standards that sit in the policy. And I don't, Muriel, if you want to just pull up the policy, I can just point that out. I don't see the screen yet. There it is. So if you roll down to where it says standards, right there, starting there. So each of these standards reflects actions that have been identified under each of the priority areas that would be able to be created, be completed within a one-to-three time period and the three-year time period. And I, and the policy itself talks about the fact that it needs to be reviewed every two years. And the reason being is because everything's changing so much in the world of sustainability, energy use, climate control, all those types of things. And our capabilities as a school system to meet many of those needs will be changing also. So I think it's critical that as a system, we come back in two years and look at it and see what has been accomplished, what needs to be accomplished, so we keep up to date. The policy in general, though, meets the, meets the requirements of the law with the major requirements, again, and so does the climate action plans when it has to do with energy conservation management, comprehensive energy audits, zero emission vehicles, metrics for measuring energy efficiency, investigation for renewable energy sources, and investigation of sustainable sustainable and environmentally preferable purchasing and management practices. So we're pleased to be able to introduce this policy because, first of all, it does meet the law, but more importantly, it does align with the Climate Change Action Plan. And so I think we'll be working together to complete those, those items. Now, as far as we have here, Jamie Austin, she introduced herself, and Jason Walken, Walker, and both of them, I would say, are the experts in our system that can give us a little bit more information in terms of implementation, implementation of those standards and what that means for us as a school system. And of course, the administrative procedure will have many of the details that need to be there to be able to implement, but they can at least give you some general information about it, as well as they will be glad to answer any questions that committee members have. So Jamie and Jason, I'll let you guys step in.
Robin, thank you. And again, good evening to everyone, and certainly would like to thank Robin Welch for all of her work with, around working to put in writing what will become a sustainability policy for our wonderful Prince George's County Public School, School District. Also like to acknowledge Board Member Boozer Struthers here, who actually led us with the Climate Change Action Play and Work Group. We spent many months together coming up with what we felt would be doable for Prince George's County Public Schools. And many of the team members, while they are not here this evening, certainly salute them and give kudos to them because it was definitely a team effort. So I come to this evening along with my colleague Jason Walker. We're just two of many that helped put these resolutions and now adopted adopted Climate Change Action Plan into fruition. And as it relates to the energy policy, this sustainability policy would align itself with House Bill six thirty, Chapter six oh eight, which Part One speaks about every K twelve in the state of Maryland having an energy policy that's posted on its website. Now, we know that we are now in the implementation phase of a Climate Change Action Plan. So we don't have it all perfect right now. There will be many things that will change along the way, because this is a dynamic process. Is you have watched the news within the past several weeks. All types of record-breaking, things are happening as it relates to the weather. You've got Dallas, Texas. You've got things that are happening in the UK that have never happened before. So many states are having to now look at things and really adopt changes. So I wanted to at least offer that as a precursor to tonight's discussion, because we, we don't have it perfected yet. It's a work in progress and it's dynamic and we're learning as we go along. But we're happy to answer what questions we can this evening as best we can. And if we don't have the answers, if you wouldn't mind that we, you know, go back to our teammates and, and try to find out, you know, answers that would work for us moving forward.
Thank you, Jamie. Good morning. Or good evening, everybody. My name is Jason Walker. I serve as the Building Automation Technician for Prince George's County Public Schools. And just, I guess I'm here more on the technical side. Jamie's more on the energy side. I'm more on the automation side. So automation is, in a sense, the computer systems that control the HVAC and lighting systems within the county. There's a lot of good policies here. There's a lot of good procedures. And I just wanted to go through a few of them, just, just briefly, of what it would take to actually implement these policies. Currently, the county has a Energy Management Building Automation Department of three employees. To give you an idea, Fairfax County has thirty-one employees in their Energy Management Department. So the staffing there really needs to increase. We're, we're, we're running, we're running a skeleton crew. So that, that would be, I guess, part one, going through the energy of Climate Change Action Plan priorities. And the policy, they list on page twenty-one, the ratio of staffing of like, you know, HVAC mechanics and plumbing mechanics per school. Currently, we're running at a ratio of about twenty-five schools per HVAC mechanic. So each HVAC mechanic is responsible for roughly two million square foot of school system, or one HVAC mechanic for every thirteen thousand students. That ratio, according to the policy, needs to get down to ten schools per HVAC mechanic. So we would really need to double our HVAC staff. Our plumbing staff right now, we have, we have a total of ten HVAC techs that actually are assigned areas for the entire school system. And currently active, we have seven plumbers for the entire school system. So the, the staffing are vital to creating this plan without, you know, properly working HVAC systems. You increase your energy. You're not able to maintain systems. Without an Energy Management Department, we're not able to implement scheduling. We're not able to implement temperature standards or temperature set points. Currently, within the school system, we have no standardized scheduling. So really, there's no standard for when our schools are supposed to operate as far as HVAC systems, when they come on, when they turn off. And a lot of our systems currently run twenty-four seven. So there's a lot of low-hanging fruit here. We have to put the staff to really, for, for not much money, really save a lot of money. You know, hiring people that are just responsible for implementing scheduling, hiring building automation technicians, where then fixing the systems will save money, equipment will run less, and it will increase occupant comfort. So those are key things that I wanted to bring up. The other problem that we're having within the Maintenance Department as far as staffing is the pay scales to actually hire staff. If you look at the starting wage of a HVAC tech or a plumber coming in, it's thirty-two dollars and fifty-two cents an hour. Where if you look on the outside, the prevailing wage for Prince George's County Public, Prince George's County, Maryland, on the D L L R website is, has a HVAC tech or a plumber coming in at forty five dollars and thirty-nine cents an hour. And the difference between us and a prevailing wage is Prince George's County requires their employees to pay benefits and pension out of their salary, where the prevailing wage for Prince George's County, Maryland on D L L R website, has a fringe benefit where they don't pay pension and retirement and stuff out of the money. So that forty-five dollars an hour is taken money. So that's a big problem we're having. We're advertising positions. We're getting interviews, and then soon as they're offered, you know, the wages are offered, we're not filling positions. So I think that is going to be a key in implementing this, is fixing some of our staffing issues. And I, I think there's a lot of good things here, and a lot of it's very achievable. But as we create these policies and as we make these buildings smarter and more energy efficient, we're adding a lot of technology to the buildings that need to be maintained. So I thank everybody for their time. If anybody has any questions, I'll be more than glad to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, I will open the floor for discussion. Sonya Williams, Board Member Sonya Williams.
Thank you. And I too want to just thank Pamela Boozer Struthers for the foresight in putting together the Climate Action Committee Focus Work Group, because it definitely needed the attention and the collective minds of not only staff, but also the public and people that are experts in the field of climate action and energy efficiency. So I appreciate that. I think that this also solidifies the reasons behind we ended up doing the P three to build new schools. We had so many schools that were aging and with old infrastructure. We were spending a lot of time maintaining those buildings that we could only put a Band-Aid on. I think one of the first questions that was asked that I asked when I came on the Board is what would it take for us to maintain? I think then we had less than two hundred schools. What would it take? What type of staffing would it take for us to maintain those schools? Our buildings, such as bus lots and offices and things like that. We would have to look like a full-blown construction company in order to maintain those buildings based on the age and the needs. And, but we're not in the business of building and maintaining buildings. We're in the business of education. And so fiscally, our money was directed that way. I think with this new way of bringing on buildings with the P three, getting them up and running more quickly and having that maintenance side added to the equation will help us overcome and reduce that, that need for, I guess, the ratio of maintenance guys to, or maintenance personnel to buildings. I mean, one to twenty-five, that is outrageous. If one man or one person went to a building a day, it would take a month before they got back to maintain that first building. And so this definitely solidifies the fact that we're moving in the right direction, both with bringing on new buildings and maintaining existing buildings, trying to deal with the infrastructure and not, and reduce our, our, our footprint on the climate. So I think that we're moving in the right direction with this policy. We're definitely moving in the right direction by implementing the goals and activities that are laid out in the plan. So I am all for this, this policy that we're bringing all on board, and I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Board Member Pamela Boozer Struthers.
Yeah, thank you so much, Chair McInnes Murray. And I just want to thank Robin Welch and Valerie Urban for translating that big plan into the policy. I know it was, it was a lot and, you know, I, I so appreciate everyone's service on the Climate Change Action Plan Focus Work Group. I did send them an update message today, letting them know that we are taking this big step with the sustainability policy, and I think it translated really well to, to our work. I felt really good reading through it. And I do want to say, Jason, it's so great to hear from you as well now during our process. Jamie Austin and Don Holton were our voices of the staffing. You know, where we, we used to have a lot of mechanical engineers. We, you know, we used to have some appropriate staffing in that, and that diminished. And the deferred maintenance and the issues that Board Member Williams just discussed, we had the voices from Jamie and Don, and I will be so grateful to them forever for just being really direct with us and clear with us where some of these pain points are if we want to be successful. So I, I enjoy meeting you and hearing your expertise now as well. So thank you so much. And I guess my, my question is around that process that, you know, I'm hearing you from a board member, with my board, you know, board member perspective. I'm thinking about our Operations and Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee. You know, and the opportunity for, for the pieces that you're talking about, that, that, that committee now needs to hear from you if they haven't already. So I guess I just wanted to say that, that, that is something that I encourage and, you know, would probably be a visiting board member to that committee, should that move forward soon. So I just wanted to note that, and that I will be advocating internally as well around these shifts. And I do think that the work group did make some assumptions that the first savings from energy efficiency would go into appropriate staffing and operations, like to get us grounded for even greater efficiency. So I know that I, I can continue to be a voice for that. So again, just thank you to everyone who got us to this point today, and I look forward to voting on this to move forward to the full Board. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Chair Saran Ruiz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My comment was really regarding, regarding what Board Member Boozer Struthers brought up regarding the, having the proper management crew and making sure like someone, whether it was the administration or even the BAFA Committee, as she mentioned, heard the plan, because I wasn't sure if I saw that in the policy regarding having the proper management crew. So I wanted to make sure that Ms. Austin and Mr. Walker made sure those points were heard, because as a committee, we hear you, but the people who are making the plan for our budget definitely need to hear that as well. And so I will just say, Mr. Walker, Ms. Austin, you presented to us before, correct, in a committee meeting?
That's correct, yes.
Was it regarding the same matter? And so we're just now getting to it?
If, when we met before, I believe it was around April, Board Member McInnes Murray, and we were here and we were giving, we were just getting our arms wrapped around energy policy as well as what it was going to take. We hadn't fully adopted the Climate Change Action Plan just yet. But we were here and we did mention, you're correct, we mentioned some of these things that we've spoken about. Jason has elaborated on a little bit today. You are correct.
Okay, thank you. No, when I saw your faces, I was like, they brought up something in the past. I want to make sure we touched that. And so I'm glad we are covering it now. And so thank you for being here, and thank you for those who put this policy together and also be in support of it. So thank you.
Sure. You should also know that the, the student SYEP, the Student Youth Employment Program, they are convening as we speak, and we, we were with them last week, and they're going over all of this right now in their own special way and learning how to use instruments to measure in buildings and so. We're able to do this annually each summer. So we met with them last week, and it was a large group of students. So I'm happy to know that you, Alvaro, you are leading the, the students, because we certainly need champions at every, at every level and at our schools, and we certainly want to have equity across the board. So thank you so much for all you're doing.
Thank you for the wisdom you're sharing with those students.
We're happy. You all are our future leaders and our current leaders.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Boozer Struthers.
Thank you so much. I was, I was just also remembering back to the April meeting that Ms. Austin had presented to us a policy change that we could possibly help with around the energy companies sending our energy data directly to the, to the state where it's required, you know, to track our, you know, the, the idea, I guess, is to track that we're reducing our emissions ultimately. So I just wanted to raise that that's still on my radar and something that as we start thinking about Annapolis and County Council Governance and where we bring our, you know, lobbying efforts forward, that this, there's definitely areas to work together and to make sure that we, we know where that policy is. So I just wanted to raise that as a, as a point. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Boozer Struthers. That is, that is, would be very helpful if we could ever get to that state, especially not from a fully aggregated number, but separated out by facility. And we really know, because with this board policy and with what is coming forth through House Bill six thirty, Chapter six oh eight, there is a requirement to use Portfolio Manager, which is their tool of choice. And at that time, when you see in the standards and you look at item number A is an apple, and then number one, when you hear the word or see the word E U Y, which is Energy Use Intensity, all of those numbers will be displayed in Portfolio Manager for each of our two hundred thirty-four-plus facilities at Prince George's County Public Schools. And the way to try to simplify E U Y is you determine, you, you, you learn from that number, what energy is coming from that school? What is it using? And so in these high heat indices days, usually July and August are your hottest months. But right now, because of climate change, we're kind of like all over the place. But those, in those months, you will start hearing, hey, we need to try to curtail because the nation is competing for energy demand, and the grid can only, it only has certain capacity. So then you start getting into situations such as in California and in New York, things such as brownout and blackouts. Not to get too complex, but that's where that E U Y number comes from. So to Board Member Sonya Williams, point and Board Member McInnes Murray, and you, Board Member Boozer Struthers, in terms of our P three projects and, and building more energy-efficient buildings and our variable ages of buildings, that comes into play because we may have an older building. And, and sometimes it could be with some of the technologies now, you may have more energy intensity from newer buildings because of the technology. While it's trying to be energy efficient, it may rely upon more factors to be more energy efficient. So we'll have to see. But in this initial stage, baseline measures will be established, and we will utilize that Portfolio Manager tool, which is where we are now. We're, we're working, Jason and other Jason and the whole full complimentary team working to try to get there so we can have baseline numbers, so we will know what's coming forth from our buildings. And we'd like to know, ideally, we would like to know before it becomes billable. You know, like when you're at home and that curtain is running, and you're like, let me, let me go get to that toilet really quickly, because I don't want to see that bill. It's the same thing. If you're here on television when you're not It's the same thing. If you're here on television, when you're not home, set that temperature thermostat to seventy-eight when you're not home. That's the ideal setting. Uh, and the higher you can go, the better because the lower it is, the more like your heart, just like your heart. So that compressor in that air conditioner, isn't that right, Jason? Is working harder and harder and harder to cool that building and it's not free. So
And just adding on to what Jamie said, like uh looking at old policies and uh APs that we currently have. Currently, our administrative procedure for temperature set points for AC season is for classrooms of seventy-eight degrees for, for, for cooling. And for secondary schools and the cooling and, and the heating mode, our classroom set points, the AP calls for it to be sixty-five degrees. So we want our classrooms to be sixty-five degrees in the, in the, in the heating season. So these are policies we may want to look at. Um, because I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, when my house is sixty-five degrees in the, in the heating season, I'm not too happy. It's a little cold. It's a little chilly and we get the calls. So you know, these, these are, these are temperature set points of policy. This is going to be looked at and found due.
Hey, thank you. Um, Board Member Sonia Williams.
Thank you. Um, I think that there was a good point brought up about the energy, the energy savings and how that relates to cost savings and our ability to turn that into um dealing with some of our personnel issues when uh Mr. Walker brought up the, the wage difference between the prevailing wage versus what we're paying. Um, I think it's, it's very important for us to recognize like he mentioned, the fringe benefit parts and the benefits that we're paying for that will not turn into um take-home pay. So I think that that is something that we may want to look at, at doing some type of comparison and looking to see if we're able to, out of the savings, the cost savings, if we're able to turn that into benefits to the staff that's maintaining that building. I think that that is it's, it's probably something that we have to bring in um the CEO, COO and his staff to look at, to see if that's possible. And when we will start to see those savings with the six buildings that we're about to bring online next year, we are um going to stop using a certain number of buildings. So there will be sort of a a change or cost savings or cost difference. We don't know what that look at, looks like, but I think that we should begin to look at that because when we really get this moving, um we want to be able to redirect any savings to staff as much as possible. Um, that's just my opinion. Um, my question around the tracking method of the energy that our buildings are using today, what type of method are we using to track currently how uh energy efficient um or the energy that is expended from each of our buildings? So we can do a comparison between what we do in the future versus what we're doing now.
Uh, Board Member Williams, we currently, Prince George's County Public Schools currently does not have a tool that we use that measures the energy use intensity for each of our buildings. We, we don't have anything that we use. We rely upon utility bills for those of which we, that we receive paper bills for. And it's about a thousand meters and you multiply that times each utility. That's a lot of, you know. And it's just, uh, it's, it's just a lot. And to be able to do a fair comparison, energy analysis, we need to have a very robust tool that can do that for us. And ideally, again, it would be nice to be able to have something that will give you the real-time data before it becomes billable. Most utility bills can be billed on a basis of sometimes they're twenty-nine days, thirty, thirty-one, sometimes forty-three. Now recently with WSSC Water, which is one of our water utilities, we received a bill for three hundred and forty-four days. That's almost a year. And so with Portfolio Manager, that's kind of, it's going to, you're going to have some flags that that are raised because you're not going to have data for each of the months. Again, that's almost a year. And so then it comes across, well, wow, you're spiking when you really aren't spiking, but you don't have the data to show. And some of this comes from the fact that utilities are also losing staff members. Many of them are also trying to adjust from COVID. And then you have sometimes estimated readings versus actual readings. Then you have corrected bills. So it becomes a a complicated uh task, but we work together, our accounts payable teams, as I said, it's interdepartmental uh partnering that we have here. When we work with accounts payables, we go back and forth in our utilities to ensure that we are billed accurately.
And I appreciate that. And um, what are, what are the plans for the new buildings that are coming onboard, not just the P three, but the modulators? And the ones that we do under the traditional way of bringing a building, buildings? Is there a plan to have some type of energy, real-time energy tracking on those buildings that are coming online soon?
We ask Board Member Williams, we did ask, uh, during the design, before we even identified who the developer would be, we asked. The thing is that a lot of these measures are very costly. However, this is the example I use. You either pay for it one way or you pay for it the other. So if you have a leak that's undetectable, just as we had at Kimmel Middle School twice, uh, almost Kinnawor, excuse me, Kinnawor, almost twice, two years to the, to the date, almost. That leak was underground. It was about one point two million gallons of water that calculated to be twenty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand dollar bill. So we've had a similar situation at Eleanor Roosevelt High School where we had almost a fifty thousand dollar bill. So you either pay the bill or you pay for the technology that can help you hopefully to offset the bill and then it'll end up paying for itself. The same thing as you just mentioned, if we have and we utilize the rebate incentives appropriately, such as with the Empower Maryland Rebate Incentive, which is also mentioned on one of the line items in the list under standards. Empower Maryland offers one million dollars per uh utility account in rebate incentives. So if you get a chiller that's energy efficient, that rebate incentive comes back to our school systems and you place it in a certain line item, then that line item can continue to fund like-kind projects. So if we get a rebate incentive from our chiller, we get a rebate incentive from our refrigerators, our walk-in freezers, our, a, we had a, a culinary arts upgrade at um not Friendly High School, but at uh, I'm sorry, help me, the high school that's
Probably Glen Park High School.
Not Glen Park, that's off of um
Crossland.
Montown Road, Crossland. I can see teamwork, teamwork at Crossland High School. And we were able to get rebate incentives back for all of those qualifying conventional ovens and so forth. So then you take those rebate incentives and then you place them in that same line item and you have a revolving fund that offsets, you know, your budget. It kind of adds to it and then you can do like-kind things. And hopefully some of that will go to what Jason has already spoken so well about. So we utilize those as much as possible. The lighting programs, I don't know if any of you have visited Northwestern High School recently. We did all of that, uh, all of that LED lighting retrofitting using the Empower Maryland rebate incentives. We paid nothing, zero. And that was uh valued at about five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Uh, Frederick Douglass High School was done. We're doing two, uh, uh, Tall Oaks High School right now. So we utilize those and the lighting is the first level. That's the low hanging fruit. So just as in, as you're home and you're, when you're at home, you know, if you have light bulbs now that are not LED, consider retrofitting those out to LED lights because that you can get the same brighter light at a lower cost. So we start there, even though you, you may not have been able to tackle some of the, the, the energy producing equipment such as HVAC, you're starting somewhere and then helping to improve the energy efficiency.
And I think one of the challenges, go ahead, Jason.
Okay, I'll, I'll just try to piggyback off of what Jamie was saying. Um, a- as far as utilizing those things.
Excuse me, guys. Excuse me for one second. Let's do some housekeeping. We're in a policy committee. We're crossing over into the resources. The resources in my mind are with budget. They're with the Obama group. So even though this is a robust discussion and I hate to cut it off, but my job is kind of to be a housekeeper and I don't want my colleagues in Obama to think that I'm taking over that committee because I don't have the energy. So appreciating everything that you've said, I will let you finish your thought, Mr. Walker.
Oh, thank you. I was just, I was just going to say that uh other municipalities for like, you know, building scheduling and stuff like that, they already have our buildings being, our buildings are already rented out by, you know, church groups, community members and stuff like that. And other municipalities use that money for our buildings being rented out to pay for a scheduler to schedule the buildings after hours. So that position's paid for. And that's, I know Internet County Schools does it. I believe I've talked to other municipalities. That's how they do it. So that's a position. The funding's there to pay for it and, you know, we just got to utilize it or reallocate things.
Right. And, and I was just about to, to mention that um this is a, a, a budget sort of matter because the money that we get in will be considered operating dollars. To build a building, it is considered capital dollars and there's, they're sort of brought in and spent differently. And so to me, what I'm hearing from Ms. Austin is that this is a more complicated discussion and um recognizing that when we have different entities sort of, and individuals stating that we want, we need to bring in schools at a cheaper value and then we want to put this high cost that's going to pull in capital dollars that's going to bring the, the cost of that building up. And yet we have this incentive that can give us operating dollars. Somehow we need to have a conversation to connect the two and not just look at the, the dollars that are just being spent during construction, but look at it as a whole life operating cycle. And that is something that we probably need to have a discussion about, Ms. Austin, to figure out what type of group do we need to have? Look at that, looking at some of the um information that you may have, even if it's not as accurate as we'd like, if we want to use billing um as, as a, a a cost sort of tracker. And then we can show when the bills come in where we put it in, like in Northwestern and what we've done at Crossland and, and look at how it was at one point and what it is now. And so that's why I was asking, what is our current tracking method? And let's use that and then we can convert over as we are able to convert over to, to track it. There is some kind of soft cost savings because at the end of the day, what we want to see is that the money that we're investing is, is bringing in some type of a return that we can show dollar for dollar. We saved five dollars here, y'all. And we spent three dollars. So we have a, we're showing a profit. And so that's, that's why I asked that question. And so I think that that's, those were the only two things. And I thought I have one other third thing, but wages and how we can sort of increase our rate wage and where we can probably pull that money from and how we're currently tracking uh our energy usage. So I appreciate this information. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I go to uh Board Member Boozer-Strether, for our brand new staff, we usually have one round when we are having a discussion. There should be a timekeeper. And we have one round of five minutes and one round of three minutes for the board staff, I mean, for the board members. So just keep that in mind as you go to your other committee meetings and board meetings. Okay, thank you. Uh, Board Member Boozer-Strether.
Yeah, I just wanted to go ahead and make the motion to move this to the full board if that's is that, is that what you're meeting in this moment?
Yes, I, 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 I wanted to make one comment, though I was trying to make sure that all board members were heard first. And it's not lost on me that there needs to be resources. But my question to Ms. Welsh is, will that be captured in the AP that you create for this policy? The, the, the resources that they would need to create, I mean, to start even with the baseline information that they're trying to gather with the Portfolio Manager. The information, I mean, the resources have to be captured someplace or we are creating a policy and creating a situation for people to fail. We don't want to do that.
So, so the, the administrative procedure will definitely provide the details of how these standards are going to be implemented. Um, as far as writing an administrative procedure that we need this many staff to complete that, that is generally not the practice. However, saying that, I will say that all of this conversation actually does get shared with the CEO. And she certainly can, um, and she's very committed to moving forward with the policy and with the climate, climate change action plan. And so I believe that um she will be very supportive of us, including some language within the AP and also just her advocating for the resources. If you, if you actually look at the end of the policy, it actually says that one of the responsibilities of the CEO is, it says the CEO is authorized to advocate for adequate resources to promote the school system's sustainability plan. And that, that's probably one of the first times we've ever, I, we've ever put something like that into the policy, but it was put there because of the recognition of the fact that to be able to save energy, you have to, which ultimately will save money, but to do that, you have to spend money. So she will, I am certain will be moving forward to advocate for, for the resources that we need. And I will certainly be a prize or of this conversation that has happened today in this meeting.
I appreciate that. So uh, and I am in support of supporting this policy. So maybe when we present it to the board, someone from the administration, the C A, CEO or her staff will be prepared to at least let the board know how they were, how they're going to look at getting the resources that you need to implement this plan properly. Okay, thank you. So um no further comments. So um Board Member Boozer-Strether, I'm back to you.
All right, thanks. I, I did want to make a motion to move this to public comment through the introduction to the board on our next, at our next meeting, which I believe is August eighteenth. And I just, I, but I offer it with one small amendment of the, on page two. A, it says Climate Action Change Plan, when the title is actually the Climate Change Action Plan. So sorry. With that amended, so there's no confusion that, that there's separate documents so that that
I apologize. I will absolutely take care of that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so, so the motion is to move the policy to the full board with the amended change on page two, A, to Climate Action Change, uh, to, what, okay, can you please repeat?
Climate Change Action Plan.
Climate Change Action Plan uh for uh public comment. All in favor? I mean, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
If the motion passes, since there are no abstentions in any names. Thank you so much. And this was truly a really good uh conversation. So I appreciate it. To all of the staff from the administration, thank you, guys. I can feel your passion. I can feel your passion around this initiative. And to you, Pam, uh, colleague Boozer-Strether, you guys did a mammoth at the, uh, you guys on your um focus group, you guys should get all kinds of awards. Should I write to somebody? Let me know who. But anyway, you guys did a great job. Thank you so much. This is a Prince George's proud moment. Now it's just the implementation piece. So now we will go to two point two Draft Policy fifteen hundred, Parent and Community Advisory Council, also known as TCAT. Taking up the next policy to consideration, we have draft, draft policy fifteen hundred entitled Parent and Community Advisory Council. Ms. Robin Welsh, will you provide us with an overview of the changes to policy fifteen hundred?
Okay, um, Policy fifteen hundred had very minor changes. And actually, this was reviewed um by the committee on April twenty-sixth. The, the changes are basically that the CEO can base, appoint herself if she wants to, to serve as the liaison to the, to the um PCAC. And also that she, um, when there are like community focused task forces or task groups, um, that she can uh not only pick someone from the PCAC to attend that or to represent the system, but also because she knows a lot about the community and all the people within the community, she might also know certain people within the community that have expertise in a certain area that would be, that was, was being addressed by the, the uh a focused task force. And she, um, this would allow her to be able to not only appoint someone from PCAC, but also to appoint someone from the community that she felt would be appropriate for that task force, uh, group. but also to appoint someone from the community that she felt would be appropriate for that task force, uh, group. Um, so they're very minor changes, um, to the current language. Um, and I do believe on the April twenty sixth meeting that, um, the actual language had been approved. Um, it was just needs to actually go to the board for a public comment.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, is there any discussion regarding policy fifteen hundred? Hearing no further discussion, may I have a motion pursuant to-
I'm gonna roll out your hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed you. I'm sorry, Mr. Vice Chair. Apologize.
I just had a question regarding, um, I know we are in the process, I believe, um, or were of appointing parents um, into the, um, PCAC. Will the changes we make, um, impact any of this or impact, um, who is currently designated by the, by the CEO? Um, cause I'm not sure if, you know, this change would go in, I think with this group, PCAC.
I, I think at this point, the, the only thing that there might be an impact is that if, if Dr. Golson herself wants to serve and attend or even attend the meetings or whatever, see, she actually has the ability to do that. So and you haven't gotten to a point where you have a task force right now that you wanna appoint someone from the PCAC. Um, or that you want, that she wants to be able to appoint someone from the community. So I, I think right at this moment, there should not be any impact.
Okay, and so, um, with the changes being passed, um, the CEO would still be able to participate? Wouldn't have to wait until like, um, the next, I think, school year for the policy change to take effect?
No, it'll go in effect right away because it's, it's not, it's, uh, it has nothing to do with staff or students.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, may I have a motion pursuant to void policy ninety-three forty, Roman numeral four, paragraph seventy to forward policy fifteen hundred entitled parent and community advisory council to the full, full board with a recommendation to advance, to advance consideration of the policy and to seek public comment on the policy.
So moved.
Second. Uh, anybody?
Again.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly second. Uh, you ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing no abstentions or nays, uh, motion passes. Thank you. Item two point three, policy thirty-three twenty-three, purchasing. The next agenda, agenda item here, the action is policy thirty-three twenty-three entitled purchasing. I would like to remind everyone that last fiscal year, this policy was forwarded to the full board for public comments. Public comment on this policy was open from June tenth, tenth to June twenty-fourth with no comments received. This person's purchasing policy was advanced in the full board as first reader. Ms. Welsh, would you provide us an update to this policy?
So, so the, um, the policy itself is, uh, you know, remains the same. Just as a quick recap of the, of the critical pieces of the policy. Probably the biggest, the, the biggest, um, change is the increase in the threshold for board approval of competitive procurement from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand for equipment, materials and supplies. Um, so that's the first thing. And then the, um, second thing is a focus on the, um, responsible bidder who provides the best value through a formal bid and then is approved by the board of ads. So that not only are we looking at like the lowest price, but we're also looking at a wide variety of factors. Um, in terms of the bidder's ability to meet all the technical requirements that we have. And at, at some point, there may be a situation where there is more important to have someone who is better at meeting those technical requirements than you pay something slightly higher than what the lowest bidder could offer. And this would go to, for board approval.
Thank you. Uh, board members, are there any comments, um, discussion regarding purchasing policy thirty-three twenty-three? Uh, Board Member Sonya Williams?
Thank you. Um, I think that that is a, a very great, a very good ad to have it so that it's the lowest, most qualified bidder. Um, you know, the old saying goes, you get what you pay for. And so sometimes the lowest bid may not be the most qualified person. Um, and so that is a, a definitely something that I am happy to see that we're adding to this policy. Um, and the other comment is around, uh, there was a recent, and when I say recent, it's been a couple of months. Um, a report on, um, procurement activities. And Ms. Welch, I wanted to just confirm that those recommended, um, changes are included in this policy. Um, and I think it, it, it was around, uh, how we solicit bids and how the board interacts with those, the bidding process and getting on, bringing on consultants or contractors.
Are you referencing the, um, the findings in the legislative audit? Where they, that, yes, that this, those changes were to address the, what, what the findings were in the legislative audit?
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that those were included. Um, and then how often do we review this policy in particular? Is this, is it on a different schedule than our normally, normal policies?
There is no language. This was a formal, former policy that we had and there was no language related to the review schedule. So it would be under the regular schedule that's listed in ninety-three forty.
Okay, I just wanted to, to check because I know that there are regular updates to procurement activities. And so, um, if it's not in there, I'm not concerned, but I think that we, on that regular schedule of review, we probably should review any actions that changes how procurement operates in between the review of the last time and the current review. Um, but I'm not concerned that it's not in there, but I just wanted to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion from board members? Hearing nothing further, may I have a motion to forward policy thirty-three twenty-three to the full board for consideration to advance this policy?
So moved?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Um, all in favor? Aye.
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 Hearing no nays or abstentions, the policy passes. I mean, the motion passes. I'm sorry. Uh, two point four.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, yes.
Madam Chair, I just had one, one quick sort of clarification. Um, typically, I thought that we should take a motion first and then go into discussion and then-
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I thought, I thought we were discussing, you know, so that's right. Correct me. Help me. I appreciate that. So, are we good?
Thanks.
Is the discussion closed? Is the motion okay and the motion passed? Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Now we'll go to two point four, school year twenty-two, twenty-three, policy and governance committee list of policies to review and schedule of review. The last item on the agenda this year, this is the list of policies for review and schedule of review. We will vote as to whether or not to forward these documents to the full board as a discussion item at the next board meeting. Ms. Welsh, would you review for the committee the list of policies for review in school year twenty-two, twenty-three? And the schedule for the policies to be reviewed?
Yes. Um, so according to ninety-three forty, the, um, that, that bylaw re, um, requires this CEO to submit her recommendations for what policies need to be reviewed, revised, rescinded, added new, new policies, added whatever. And so she did provide in May a list of, um, the policies that she was recommending for revision as well as new policies that were listed based on, um, new legislation that had been passed this current year. Or, well, also there was some legislation passed in previous years that had not been addressed in policy that needed to be picked up in policy. And then some, some policies that need to be actually created to align with the current administrative procedures that we have. So she included that information as well as some administrative procedures that the administrative, uh, administration will have to address. There's what, the one area, according to ninety-three forty, it states, um, that, um, policies also that she should list what policies have been reviewed but are not recommended for revision. And I just wanted to point out that that was not miss accidentally. She did not provide that because of the fact that she's reviewing policies. We're all reviewing policies, you know, all the time. So to try to put out a list of all the policies that have been reviewed over, say, the past year, um, it would not be, it just, there's no benefit in trying to remember a list what those policies are. So that was, that was not accidental that you don't see anything under component two, because that doesn't really, um, there's, you know, we're looking at what do we need to revise all the time and what needs to be updated or what do we need to add? Because we, the law now requires a new policy. So that's, that's why you see her including our component one, three and four. So in her list, she did include two, um, policies that actually the, the committee has requested that they, that, that we have. And one had to do with Board of Education Standing Committee and Focus Work Groups eighty-one hundred. And the other one had to do with Meetings of the Board ninety-three sixty. Um, I only point that out because then if you go to the sched, to the actual schedule slash work plan that lists out all the policies that we hope to cover at each of the policy, policy and government, uh, committee, policy and governance committee meetings. We have those two policies listed, but we also have, um, policy zero-one-zero-eight, which is code of conduct. That particular policy addresses the code of conduct for Board of Education members. And then policy zero-one-two-zero, system oversight. And, um, uh, Board Member Mackens Murray requested that we include those two policies in addition to the other two policies that Dr. Golson had included in her recommended policy. So I just, I say that only to say that we have both the superintendent's recommendations as well as the committee's recommendations for policy, policies that should be addressed throughout, say, this school year. And you will see that the policies that don't have a number are, um, are, are related to, um, many of them are related to, um, the new legislation that we have to address, um, because of what's been passed this past school year. Um, this is a tentative schedule and if you look through it and you think that we should be changing any of the policies to different dates, um, that's certainly, you know, a conversation a committee can have. And I also wanna let you know that as you get closer to the end of the year, I only put one policy per meeting. And we can always, I mean, you always can add policies throughout the year that you, let's say, as a committee, you say, we really need to have a policy on such and such and we add it. But the reason I did drop back the number is because if I recall correctly, this past year, we were working really hard near the end to try to get all these policies done that should have been done earlier in the year. And we were just trying to move these policies. So I wanted to make sure to provide room so that if we do get stuck on a policy or something and it gets pushed back, that we have time at the end of the year to get through those policies. And certainly we can always, you know, add policies that the committee feels needs to be added.
Thank you so much. So, uh, may I have a motion to forward the list of policies and review schedule to the full board as a discussion item at the next meeting?
So moved?
Second.
Now that we have a motion on the floor, um, any discussion? Board Member Pamela Boozer Struthers?
Yeah, uh, thank you. A question I have for you, Chair Mackens Murray, is as there's potential new policy um, that board members want to bring forward, um, or that come from, I, I mean, I guess when they come from Annapolis, we have the process for that. But if it's generated from a board member out of another committee, what is, do you have a preferred processes chair to receive those prelim, preliminary ideas around the policy? And the expectations of how quickly that might move or what resources from administration to help, um, draft a new policy? I just thought it would be good to set some expectations around any new policy ideas for this year.
Uh, that's a very good question and I'm glad that you ask it. I've been looking at ninety-three forty, I mean, ninety-six forty. And I know that there is a process and that policy to do that. I have not had the experience yet to determine how. I would like to see it, but I've, I have invited our, um, legal, uh, team to help me carve out some of that. And that is the reason that we are looking at some board policies, so that we can do a, a, a good job of, of governing ourselves and stand within whatever that agreement we reach as board members. So I don't have an answer for you today, but I promise you that, um, there will be an answer soon.
Right, I, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, Board Member Sonya Williams?
My comment is along the same lines. Um, I think that it's great the way, uh, Ms. Welsh has put together this schedule to give us the room for some of those things that, um, Board Member Boozer Struther just brought up, so that we can have the space. I did feel like we were cramming a lot in at the, at the last minute, at the last meetings that we have for the committee. So I appreciate that forethought. And I think that, um, we have to have time for our committee to review policies, to make change, to go back, come back, go back. I don't think that a good policy is done in one meeting. You know, unless we're all focusing our energies on that one policy and we know reality, we're not gonna do that. So a policy that may be at the beginning of our committee year may not get through the process until the end of the year because of changes in, in, um, revisions. So I appreciate her thought, her forethought in giving us space for that. So I just wanted to compliment her on that. Thank you.
Thank you so very, thank you so very much. And you know, one of my goals is to ensure that we as board members understand what our responsibility is in creating policies, in reviewing policies and being timely around that. So I promise that the work is going to be done. We will share with the, with the commi, uh, with the community as we, um, identify what our steps are going to be. It's a work in progress. It's a work in progress, but at least it's a challenge that I believe that we're up to. Are there any more, uh, discussion around the work plan and the review of the, this motion? Seeing none. Um, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, hearing no nays and abstentions, uh, the motion passes. So, um, follow-ups and next steps. All follow-ups will be posted on board docs upon receipt. And the next policy and governance committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two at five P M virtually. Four point O, closing remarks from the committee chair. I appreciate this meeting that we had today. The conversation was good. Everyone came prepared. The administration sent us technical experts and that's what I personally look for. And I think it's an expectation that all board members have. On a personal note, our, uh, board staff, and we have a new complement of board staff. Uh, well, we would say a combination of the old board staff and new board staff. But I appreciate the effort that you guys put into, um, bringing, preparing me for this meeting. And Mr. Joe Day, I don't know if you were properly introduced to the community, but Mr. Joe Day is Director of the Board Office. And all of these new faces that you see and all work for him, other than the board members, the administrative staff, the lawyers. So thank you all. Thank you all. And I realize that we're all learning. I am learning too. So with that being put on the table, I promise you, uh, Mr. Vice Chair and myself have agreed that we're going to work, we're gonna do our due diligence around getting policies, um, completed timely on, with the advice and the, and the, um, Um completed timely on with the advice and the and the um. Advice and um assistance of the administration. So having said that, thank you to our guests, Ms. Austin, Mr. Walker, and like I said, your passion is not lost on me. Thank you so very much for joining us today. And Pam. You guys definitely under the sustainability uh plan, you guys have a Prince George's Proud. And we're going to make sure we follow through to to implement it in a Prince George's Proud way. So with that said. There are no further comments. We will say good night. Thank you, guys.
Motion to adjourn.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
I got it.
Second.
I got it. I got it. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded uh to adjourn. So we are adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you very much.